Good morning, Ms. Ms. Bolton. Ms. Bates? Ms. Bates?
I call to order the June 19th, 2019 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Ms. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Present.
President Jones?
Present. Thank you. Before we start with the agenda, I just wanted to make sure board members knew that we were moving the Resolutions section up today on the agenda, so we're going to do our presentations first and then follow that by the resolutions. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, June 10th, 2019, the regular meeting, June 10th, 2019, and the special public meeting, June 12th, 2019.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the motion?
I think I did.
Ms. Bates, thank you. Mr. Messer made the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Superintendent, please introduce the first presentation.
Gladly. So, we're very excited about the presentations we have for you today. We want to give you some updates on some work that we've been encompassing all school year long. And so, our first one is anti-bullying campaign. And so, we have our Assistant Superintendent Susan Bundy is going to do the introduction.
Good morning. And I am here today with Meg Burrows, who is one of our school social workers, who supports our bully prevention efforts. Dr. Carrie Bunger, who has been working in positive school culture, is one of our managers. And unfortunately, Ross Turpo cannot be with us this morning because he is at an innovations conference in Atlanta. But we're going to spend some time this morning talking with you about the impact of the work that Bridgable did and the way that we are proceeding with their recommendations.
Good morning, everyone. I am very happy to be with you all today and to share some exciting updates. The first part of our presentation will be centered around bully prevention and the work that we want to do moving forward based upon Bridgable's recommendations. And then, we'll give some general updates about what we've done as a department and where we want to move forward. So, the five key themes that were established through the work of Bridgable and the work of Dunne, and I'm so appreciative of that work and that time that was taken, those five key themes are listed for you here. I'm briefly going to review those, and then Meg Burrows is going to take a brief dive into how, as a department and a district, we are going to address and move forward in action around these five key themes. The first is around bully prevention and bully reporting, also is empathetic acknowledgement that bullying is paramount. So, throughout the district, that we take a stance against bullying and that everyone, from a parent volunteer to the superintendent, recognizes the importance of making sure our students feel safe. Number two, the peer-to-peer support among students is the most promising area to improve programming, that empowering our students and having student voice as a part of this, not the adults saying what needs to be done with bully prevention, but listening to our students and providing that level of support and guidance. Number three, it's important to have defined, well-trained adults at every school who are the main points of contact. So, diffusing the knowledge of how to address bullying and making sure that, again, all of our adults, from our plan operators to our principals, feel empowered to be able to handle situations if a student comes to them and says, "I'm being bullied," as well as having additional point people in place. Number four, more training on how to identify, respond to, and reduce bullying for students' parents and staff. And number five, shifting from punitive actions, so exclusionary consequences and punishment only, towards restorative practices. I'm going to pass the baton to Meg Burrows.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about what I do, live, breathe every day here at CPS. So, if we want to start with the first step, action step from Bridgable, we are looking at the training of empathetic listening and relationship building. And the way we are doing that is that all teachers and peer professionals are going to be trained on empathetic listening and relationship building on August 14th. So, we're very excited about this, looking at every person in our district, so that everyone has this view of the importance of relationship. We are also using our onboarding process to get to our work with our new staff, to get them to understand the importance of empathetic listening and relationship building. We are also enhancing our bullying reporting with the text app, which is really exciting because this really gives us the opportunity to meet students where they are, as well as ourselves. You know, we text more than we talk on our phones these days. So, using the text app allows us to have that two-way communication between the reporter. So, using your text, you know, you want to report bullying, this is what's going on, and using technology to increase reporting for our students and our community members and our parents. So, the second theme is the peer-to-peer support. We have cross-age mentoring programs. On February 7th, we did a district-wide anti-bullying event with our girls, fifth- and sixth-grade girls. We invited 76 fifth- and sixth-grade girls from across the district, from eight different schools, to come together to look at anti-bullying, empowerment, and really coming together as this difficult age, talking to each other, figuring out what's going on, how can we support each other through, you know, just being fifth- and sixth-grade girls. And we also had champions at each of those schools. So, these champions came with the girls and really worked with them on this empowerment piece too, and then brought this back to their school, and have continued these programs in their schools so they can support each other throughout the year. So, the second theme is the adult point of contact of bullying. We're doing ongoing training with principals and assistant principals. I talked with the principals and assistant principals on a regular basis to get them to understand the importance of bullying, answer questions on that regular contact they can call on a regular basis to talk through issues, talk through what's going on, questions that they have. And all principals and assistant principals know that they have that ability to call me up, email me, come to me for more information. We're also increasing our capacity of school social workers, so school social workers can do more of the prevention work as well as intervention work when bullying is going on. The fourth step is more training on bullying. We have and will continue to share resources with the LSDMC, schools, and community groups. We have presented to different community groups about what bullying is, the importance of reporting, and how we want to work together as a community to work through this problem and solve this bullying problem. We, also, I am a certified mental health first aid provider, so we're hoping to continue that into the schools, so we can educate our staff more on what mental health first aid is and how to respond to a mental health crisis that we could be seeing within the school. And we also are providing support for students who are the target of bullying behaviors, as well as for those who are exhibiting bullying behaviors. And we really look at both sides of those things because it's important, just putting a student out for one or two days, they're just going to come back and show the same behavior. So, we really need to dive deep into what's going on with both sides, so we can put interventions in place to support the students who's showing the bullying behaviors and to support the student and keep the child safe who's experiencing the bullying. Now, I'll pass it on to Carrie.
So, Meg Burrows is very humble. And on the second or third theme, it said leadership from the bully prevention social worker. So, I do want to recognize the fact that, and appreciate the fact, that CPS has been committed to having a school social worker focused on bullying prevention. And she is a leader, and the principals rely on her to provide support and interventions. And also, school social workers are so brilliant at meeting families where they are and reducing barriers. So, she has an ability and a gift, really, to talk to families and community members and to remove barriers, so that we can move the work forward in bully prevention. So, she will not say that about herself, but I, as her supervisor, will say that before moving on to key theme number five, which are discipline alternatives for those who demonstrate bullying behavior. So, through Bridgable and the work of our students, they said loud and clear that punishment only doesn't work. So, okay, they make a report and they say the bullying's occurring. The principals do a great job investigating, they find that it's true, and so then, an exclusionary consequence happens, and so that student is removed, or sent to A to S, or whatever, the consequence is comparable to the code of conduct. But then, the students, in their minds and what they're seeing, which is the most important thing, they feel like that exclusionary consequence alone is not doing enough and it's not stopping the behaviors. Therefore, listening to them loud and clear, we want to make sure that we are providing restorative practice or restorative approaches to discipline, as well as allowing for behavioral reflection. So, our action steps in this area, all districts or all buildings within the district have to have a PBIS plan, and as part of that, a discipline continuum. So, we will provide additional training to our buildings and restorative approaches, so tools in the toolbox for our discipline continuum. All of our buildings will have that discipline continuum. Alternative learning centers, or ALCs, will be, we're moving from ISS that you may have experienced as a student yourself, not to say you were ever in trouble, board members, but ISS, you were. ISS of the past was sit in a cubicle and write sentences all day long. So, okay, all right, duly noted in the board minutes. It will say, "Meg Morosky, spend some time in ISS." So, you might be happy to know, Mr. Morosky, that we are shifting in terms of ISS to alternative learning centers, or ALCs. So, not only is it a consequence, and the students feel it is a consequence, but we are going to push in and provide behavioral instruction, self-reflection, and action planning. So, it's not, "I just got in trouble." It's, "Yes, I got in trouble, but I am talking to someone to figure out why and what I can do to try to change that behavior moving forward." And again, we're providing ongoing professional development to our buildings and restorative approaches for building staff. Moving forward, I also like to take this opportunity to update you on the work of quality improvement. So, earlier, I believe it was in October, I shared with you about the three QI schools, or quality improvement schools, where we were targeting social-emotional learning. And those three QI elementary schools in 2018-19 were Mount Airy, Woodford, and Fairview. We had 1.5 FTEs allocated to these three schools through Title IV monies, and we impacted over 40 teachers and 1,200 students through that work. To remind the group, two programs that were used across those three schools at various different age bands or grade bands were PATHS, which is a social-emotional learning curriculum, which is a very strong research base, and has research that supports using the program in urban settings. It was social worker and teacher-led. And then, the Good Behavior Game, or PAX, was also utilized, and this was teacher-led, and this is a toolbox of really solid, research-based classroom management self-regulation systems, things that, as teachers, you know are really great practices, but it's really nice to have it all packaged in one piece. We saw great success with both of those programs, and I'd like to highlight one graph in particular. And this was my work with Mr. Turpo and the teachers in grades four to six over at Woodford. And we saw a decrease, so we wanted our graph to go down, or our data points to go down. What you see at the bottom are weeks, and then, on the side, minutes of lost instruction across a five-day period. So, we wanted the amount of lost instruction for students that being pulled out of class due to an exclusionary consequence to decrease. So, the annotations that are there that are in yellow indicate when different interventions were put into place. And the PAX kernels are those tools in the toolbox that are incrementally put into place in order for us to see success. Before spring break, we saw a great decrease in our lost instructional time. After spring break, we saw an increase, and part of that, and this is the learning, and what I love about QI is the learning piece. You learn both from your success, as well as the failures, is that the Good Behavior Game and the work of PAX was interrupted due to standardized testing. And the work that we're going to do moving forward is to push in and provide more social-emotional support for our kids during that high-stakes testing time, when students are anxious, instead of pulling that away. So, that was a learning of how to incorporate that, and we're going to do that next year moving forward. Finally, looking back and reflecting on what we've learned, as well as moving forward, this year in 1819, PBIS has expanded in terms of our district committee and the commitment across our buildings and central office into the work of PBIS. We know, based upon research and what we know about kids, is that if we provide positive behavior interventions, then we have a solid foundation for our students, that we will see great success. We've identified four core service areas for the department, which include culturally responsive PBIS, social-emotional learning, restorative approaches to discipline, and assessment and accountability, and the work will be driven based upon those four core areas. We had six PBIS social workers in 16 schools across the district in a quality improvement focus. Moving forward, we received the Ohio School Climate Grant, so 10 of our schools, elementary schools, will be receiving targeted training, and I'm very excited that the targeted training is going to be a collaboration between CFT and University of Cincinnati and our state support team 13. So, if we are working with our teachers, we should have a teacher voice in that professional development, and we will have that in place. Increased training capacity, continued partnership, because we're all in this together with social-emotional learning, as well as our increased capacity with school social workers and attendance clerks. So, I'm very excited with the vision moving forward around those four core service areas, and I thank you for your support of the work within social-emotional learning. Any questions?
Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bowers?
I would first like to say I would agree with you about Ms. Meg Thomas, who I've worked with before. She is extraordinary and gifted. But I have three questions.
Yes.
For the alternative learning center. Knowing the limited space in school buildings, how are you guaranteeing that every school has an ALC?
That's a great question. So, I've been working with the building principals in allocating those spaces, spaces at a premium. So, I've been working with the building principals in order to make that happen. As much as possible, we're trying to have that separate from any type of calming area or other area, but space is a limitation, and we're just being as flexible as possible through that process. But we want it to be an area where behavioral reflection can occur in a confidential space. So, we don't want to necessarily use a cafeteria or something like that in order to make it happen.
And with that, will there be training for the identified staff, in that it doesn't turn into ISS?
Yes.
Because I've observed that, ALC, for the reflection, restorative conversation, but then, as the year goes on, it turns into the person, it's not really the empathetic person, and it turns into a punitive setting. Will there be ongoing, like, check-ins and seeing how the ALCs are going at the schools?
So, you bring up a great point and a great learning. So, we had training for our ISS or ALC paras, so they receive the training, and then, our PBIS teams, including the administrators, receive training in the ALC. We need to broaden our scope and make sure that our teachers are aware, so include that training, as well as push in and have check-ins. And that's where the increased capacity of our school social workers and our PBIS social workers, they're in the building, and they could stop in and see if things are on track or not on track, and then can communicate with me in order to offer additional support. So, I see the school social worker helping to remove those barriers and help problems solve.
And my, thank you. And my last and final question, on top of, this is a great presentation, I love all of the social-emotional learning. How much of a school social work time is allotted to, will each school have their own social worker? When you say you're adding social workers, what is the breakdown of where social workers would be, how long they would be there? And will these social workers be the same as the ones that are doing attendance, or is that a separate social worker?
Again, great question. We are in the process of integrating the work of the PBIS social worker, which was through Title IV funds, as well as a school social worker. And the attendance clerks will help to offset the paperwork that is associated with the attendance piece. So, the school social workers will still help with the problem-solving and the social work around the truancy and attendance, but they won't be doing as much of the paperwork to relieve them of that duty, so they can focus more on the preventative work of attendance. In terms of FTEs, certainly, I would love to see more school social workers. I think everyone across the district and across the state of Ohio sees that need. I worked with and leaned into my assignment committee, which is comprised of school social workers, lead social worker, and myself, in allocating those FTEs based upon contract. So, we looked at things like total enrollment, chronic absenteeism, discipline rates, in order to equitably distribute the FTEs based upon that. So, would I love to see more school social workers? Absolutely. I think everyone within the state of Ohio would say that. But I really leaned into the assignment committee in terms of those allocations.
Okay. And so, will you follow up with us regarding what the allocation looks like?
Absolutely. We can do that for every building.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Messer?
Yes, on behalf of the nine-year-old Ryan, I want to say thank you for your work. It wasn't talked about back then. So, thank you for that. And to the board, I'm trying to connect CPS with Welcoming Schools, which is a nationally-recognized program that might be additive in the space, that's fully focused on bullying and bullying prevention, and branding it through school districts, so that parents, and you may see one on my car that says, "Welcoming Schools, Anti-Bullying." And so, I think, you know, I go back to when I ran for school board, people would say, "Well, what did you hear when you knock on doors?" And I heard, "What do you know about bullying?" And I had a great conversation with a woman in Clifton, told her my story, and that ended that pretty quickly. But it is something I think people think about and talk about. It's in the news. And so, you know, I think how we not just make this a conversation with our faculty and our students, but somehow, how we bring in their families to the conversation and begin to have that as kind of a community expectation, that's just how we operate. So, thank you for all that work. The question, and maybe it's for another day, or maybe it just, I'm sure this is tracked, but I'm just curious, like, what is the problem that this is solving? Is it prolific? Are we in the hundreds? Are we in the double digits as far as incidents? I would just be curious on some of those facts, maybe, as a follow-up to today.
We can certainly share semester one and semester two substantiated and unsubstantiated reporting.
Thank you.
And we do that as it stands. So, we're happy to share that with you.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? I do have, Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, thanks for the report, and thanks for the administration commissioning the folks that went out in the field and got the research as well, so we weren't so inward-thinking.
Yes.
And I think that was very useful. And particularly, the emphasis on student voice, I think, was important. Couple of things. The culture right now is in part based on bullying. So, it seems like it's a really important thing for us to establish particular social norms inside of each building. And of course, that does start with the principal. So, the principal is great for training there, and then also, that we're not modeling any adult-to-adult bullying, or any teacher bullying of students. So, it is, it seems to be more rampant now than even in the past. I have a couple of questions. Have we started to figure out ways to identify the children that are often victims? And figuring out why they are victims? Because it seems to me that there's a, I know within our own, my extended family, actually, we have a kid that's beautiful and bright and gorgeous and smart and all this other stuff, but there's a victimization piece to this, and that once somebody is picked on, then it just seems to go year after year. So, I'm interested in how we do that. And the other piece is how we build confidence for our children, so that they don't become victims, let alone confidence. A bully usually has no confidence, or he or she wouldn't be bullying. So, this confidence-building and focusing on the whole child, I think, that you're focusing on is really a good idea and helpful, because it seems sort of interpersonal. What's the status regarding supervision by adults in the hall, in the lunchroom, and on buses? Superintendent?
So, that's definitely something that we can come back to you with, but it may be hard to answer that question broadly. So, schools have different practices within each building. In many instances, you will see security in our hallways, monitoring the halls, but I can't say that every moment of the day, there's someone in every location. In some instances, on our buses, we do have bus monitors who serve us to make sure that behavior is maintained within our buses to and from school. But we'd be happy to come back to you with some more specific information.
That would be great, because, you know, it can't just be about the security people in the high schools, although that's, it has to be the teacher standing outside their door. And that's basically something that has to happen. Not every single hour, every passing, or whatever, but an adult presence probably would help. Have we, I know that part of the things we were hearing from the field, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sir, well, I love that you asked that question, because one of the things I do with school is school mapping. So, we look at the incidents that have been brought up and where they're happening, so we can say, "Okay, is it happening in this hallway? Is it happening here?" And a lot of times, we'll have kids map it out. So, where are you seeing this happen? So, you know, not just the adults, but really, we want the kids' information. So, where is this happening? When is this happening? And then, we map it out, so we can make sure that there are adults in those spots.
And I'm so glad to-
So, that's not, district-wide, sorry, but that is happening in school.
The mapping is very, very important. It's almost like, you know, the police department doing, you know, crime studies.
Friends?
And it can then be addressed in a significant way. I really am glad to hear that. Have we also done some work regarding student court and conflict resolution among peer-to-peer for students? Because I haven't heard that, but I know that that was a couple of the things that kept being said in the sessions that I know several of us participated in.
Many of our schools do have their own individual conflict resolution. We don't have kind of a chosen program throughout the district. We've talked about that before. But schools are, on their own, doing conflict, peer-to-peer mediation, conflict resolution in the buildings.
Great. I think that's very useful. I appreciate the report.
Mr. Morosky?
Thank you so much for the report.
Thank you so much for the report. I was privy to a few of those conversations with Dunne and his crew, and they were excellent. I would like to add a follow-up to the amount of trouble that I got in as a young person. It prepared me well to be a dean of students eventually. I called my dean of students from high school and let him know the day I got hired to say, "You're never going to guess what I'm going to be doing." That being said, this is an important issue to me for multiple reasons. Ms. Bolton stole one of my questions. So I am just going to state that I am a huge fan of peer mediation. And I know individual schools have their own sort of programs. If there was a way to standardize that in such a way that it was still malleable enough that each individual school could implement it to their specific needs, I think that would be something that's worth our time to figure out and worth our investments as well. I also just want to give a high five to all the peer mentoring I saw. That's awesome to see that that will expand. I know that, not to speak for the superintendent, but when she met with the young women, I met with the young men, I know we both heard similar things that they all referenced. The schools that had those programs, the kids mentioned them. Not because they were prompted, they just sort of came up organically, that they really enjoyed the ability to have an older person in their school to sort of walk them through the day-to-day. And then, I guess the only question I have left is, so with the point person at the school, I saw the additional training, which is excellent. Is there consideration to having, and I understand why this could work and not work, to having like a person? Because there might be a student that doesn't even know who this person is and doesn't feel comfortable going to them. So is there any consideration having a bully person, an adult in the building, or just leave it up to the students to go to who they're most comfortable?
Right. So there's two sides to that, just like you said. I want to set clear that having a safe learning environment is everyone's responsibility and not one person in the building. So certainly, we can look to and investigate whether the school social worker can help empower everyone through that. And that Meg's leadership can help with that process as well. My concern is, is that if it's one person, then it's seen as one person. And my vision and the district's vision is that all hands are on deck.
Hey, Meg, I agree. Okay. Thanks.
We have three more questions, and I am going to ask board members to be brief with their questions for the sake of time, because we know a couple of people have to leave. So we want to move on. And it's an exciting conversation, which is why everybody seems so energized around it. But I do want to remind us of time. Ms. Bowles followed by Ms. Bolton.
Board member Bolton brought to my attention, and I missed this, when you mentioned transportation. As the district is responsible for the time a student is picked up from the bus stop until the time a student is dropped off, how are we, how is this translated over to bus behavior, training adults on the bus, even aides? Is this being translated or transferred? Are they included in this training? And how will the restorative practices work if things are happening at the bus stop, before and after school? And maybe superintendent can respond to the training for the aide, or I don't know.
Yep. So, not to, would you, would you go first?
I think Dr. Bunker. More specific information than I do, which is why we have these great professionals who can speak to it. Thank you.
So recently, we collaborated with the Transportation Department and Lauren Johnson in providing PBIS lessons for our sixth graders going on to high school and what the expectations are for being on the bus and the fear that comes from going from a more traditional school bus system to riding public transportation. So there has been teaching around what the expectations are and how the students should be and behave on the public transportation within that piece. And then, within PBIS in each elementary school building, they look at both, what are the expectations in the classroom as well as outside the classroom, which includes the bus. So in terms of teaching behavioral expectations, that has happened both for our high school folks, as well as incorporated with the PBIS work in the elementaries.
Which has been going on, but the question really is about ongoing and preparing the adults on the bus and then incidents that happen.
So in conversations with Lauren Johnson, our transportation director, he understands that in order to have safe transportation, we need to make sure that we are equipping our bus drivers with the understandings of PBIS frameworks and positive acknowledgement. And so that is part of his August rollout with our service providers for our bus companies, is that there will be driver training. So what we do, in just all transparency, what we do need to take a look at is the continual training that must occur because our bus drivers are, we have frequent turnover of bus drivers. So that is one thing. So we have August training scheduled. We need to make sure that we have rolling training provided for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton.
Just two places to focus also from my previous life is the intellectual bullying that occurs in the classroom, where maybe a kid that's not ready to speak out, maybe does speak out, and then there's not a receptive person, or their peers are not as receptive as they need to be. And the other piece of training, to the point about buses, and is people that are employees and aren't our employees. We need to focus on the extracurricular activities, both in the athletics and in arts, because that is also an area of bullying where it's actually justified as part of meeting the program, if you will. So a couple of areas there. Thank you.
Yes, and just one final question, being a mental health professional retired. I was glad to hear that there's a component in there because you can't separate the two. It's, the mental health aspect of this is so critical to the overall program. So I was glad to see mental health first aid in there. My question is, is this the nationally, national model for mental health first aid? And then who is providing that service for us?
So yes, this is the national model, and Meg has been trained. We want to continue to increase capacity in that area. There is no other Meg, but we would like to continue to build capacity. But Meg is our trainer, and then she has already planned to go into some schools that have requested that support.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to sell a product because I'm retired. So I, you know, no connection there. But there is training, there are a number of trainers in the mental health arena who are certified and can provide the training if the district needs additional training. And it's at no cost. And so, one of my, my last question is, to which staff? Because the effectiveness of mental health first aid is if you train broadly. It's not just for the teachers, but it's for the bus drivers. And it's for the people that are at the front desk. So I'm just curious to know how widespread that training component is.
So at this point, it's within the buildings, but I hear you loud and clear. And I think it would be a great opportunity for transportation to have that support as well. This year, in 1819, we did train our security staff in de-escalation techniques and in trauma-informed care. And that was very valuable for our security staff to continue to have that process. So we are looking into how we can support not only our teachers, but our critical non-teaching staff within that work.
Thank you. We appreciate the presentation. You can tell of the interest and the level of energy. And I think, congratulations, because we've come a long way with this. And we needed to. So we look forward to additional updates and progress. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent Mitchell.
So just to close the loop on that, we will be following up with guidelines and practices in terms of what we should see in our hallways as it relates to student supervision, as well as on our buses. We will also follow up on the peer mediation suggestion. In addition to getting to the board, the number of school social workers by school, as well as the number of bullying-reported incidences substantiated and not substantiated over the course of this past school year. In the fall, we'll follow up with a presentation by the Transportation Department, giving an overall presentation. But we'll make sure that included in that presentation, we will have the training that will have taken place by then as it relates to behavior on the bus. So just to close out, close the circle on all those things. We heard you loud and clear.
Thank you.
All right. So to introduce our next presentation, we're very excited to do an update regarding Stargol, Clifton, and Mercy, the site. We're excited because we are just, we're less than two months away to opening the school year. So it's going by extremely fast. But Robin Brandon has been working extremely hard with her team. They have done phenomenal work and are here to share the updates.
Good morning. The rain needs to stop. I heard this morning on the news that out of the last 169 days, we've had 106 rain days. And in construction, that poses quite a challenge. So that's the bad news. The good news is that we made a decision early on to release the site package for Stargol Stadium early. Had we not done that, we would not be able to complete the project. So it was a really wise decision early on for us to be able to get that site work done early, which has pushed us to a point where we're feeling a lot more confident. So just to share with you, this was taken yesterday. We had a drone photo. You can see that the building on the bottom of the screen to the left, to refresh your memory, is the ticket booth. And that would be the home locker room building. In the center are the home grandstands with the public restrooms underneath. And then behind the trees to the right is where the concession building and the visitor locker room will be. I'm excited to report that the field itself is done. The weather is holding up the track work. We were supposed to start on the track last week with a proof roll, but it's been too muddy. So that's pushed back a little bit. But the field itself, the turf, everything related to the field is complete. Here's some up-close photos of the buildings themselves. Like I mentioned, the home locker room and the ticket room building are the bottom-left and the top-left photos. You can see that we're really kind of moving along on those. We've got roof trusses up. We'll be ready to put the insulation board and the roofing on it soon. The grandstand, grandstands themselves and the public restrooms are going to be right on schedule. And the visitor locker room and concession building, strategically, we made a choice to focus on that building last. So that one's falling a little bit behind the other three, but that was by design. So here's an up-close of the field. And on the bottom right, so these were taken about a week apart. You can see on the bottom right, we actually have the grandstand seating complete. It took us a little less than a week to get those seats in, so that is done as well. Oh, we lost a slide. So scheduled. We are on the ticket booth building. We're looking at completion of that building on the 17th of August. The grandstands and the public restrooms will be done on August 2nd. The visitor locker room building and concession building will be partially done on the 23rd. And what I mean by partially is, we're hoping that it's occupiable. We may have punch lists, we may have some painting, but we think it'll be usable. As I mentioned, the field itself is complete. And right now, we're on schedule to have the track complete on August 2nd. So we've communicated with athletics that we're fairly confident that they can start scheduled practice, official scheduled practice on the field. And we're going to make accommodations to get the student athletes to the field and then still keep our constructions on where the buildings are under construction. So we're going to kind of work simultaneously while they're practicing. We're going to be finishing up the buildings. So we know that the first home game is August 29th, and we are fully prepared to be ready for that really exciting event. So, questions?
Do board members have questions? Mr. Davis.
Can you give me an update on the pavers?
Pavers? So we've been working with the Alumni Foundation. They have purchased a thousand blank pavers that'll go in. And those will be like the placeholders until they sell the engraved pavers. So those will be going in as soon as we can get the plaza proof rolled and prepped. So we're prepared to install those before opening.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay. Oh, there was my schedule. So Clifton Area Neighborhood School. So we've been really working closely with the Kansas Advisory Group and the Clifton parents. We did a tour with the Spring Grove Village community and some of their families. Ms. Bolton was there. It was a nice event, and it was a sunny day, which helped. Here's some inside shots of where we were about a week and a half, two weeks ago. So you can see on the left, classroom spaces. We're keeping as much of the character of the 1906 building as we can. So the wood floors will just be redone. We're keeping the wood wainscoting. And we really want to keep the charm of that original building. On the bottom right is the second-floor corridor. You can see we're starting to paint. We're keeping all of the original subway tile. And it'll just be cleaned and refurbished. And then, on the top right, is the new corridor that we've constructed on the first floor. And just opposite that wall is where the new lunchroom will be. So if you're coming in off the McAlpin entrance, you'll be walking into the new corridor space. And you can see just on the very edge of the photo, where the opening to the lunchroom will be, that's going to be a glass wall. And we have the same glass wall mirrored on the opposite side of the lunchroom. So it's going to be a really nice, bright, welcoming space. This is a site circulation plan that we did, working with our Transportation Department and the Department of Traffic Engineering with the city. And also to help explain to the community and to the city zoning authorities on how we were going to circulate parent drop-off and buses and parking on the site. So we've also been working with CRC on capturing parking spaces in their lot that they will allow us to reserve for our staff. So you can see, we'll be staging buses on McAlpin. Parent drop-off will be in the CRC parking lot. Staff parking in the CRC parking lot. And then we'll have handicap and visitor parking in the driveway space between Recreation and the 1906 building. We went to City two weeks ago, two weeks ago on Tuesday, for a conditional use variance to our zoning classification to allow us to use the property that is on the Rossin site. Remember, that's three parcels. So this is the parcel adjacent to the 1906 building, to be able to use that for a playground. We've been working closely with a couple of parents from the Clifton community on developing a playground that has a structured play component, as well as a nature playscape. So this is sort of the conceptual design. And you can also see the rendering of what the structured play piece will be. If the weather gives us a break, we're hoping to get the storm pipe and fill in. If you're familiar with the site, there's about, almost a six-foot swale in that area that we're going to be putting storm pipe in and filling that in so it's at the same level as the driveway behind the school. So that is still in progress, but we've got the design complete and we've already ordered the play equipment. So here's our schedule for Clifton. We're looking at a certificate of occupancy on August 2nd. Windows should be complete on August 1st. We have final cleaning scheduled, furniture installation scheduled, our movers scheduled. And we're working with a volunteer group from Macy's. They're hoping to bring in between 200 and 300 volunteers to help get the school fancied up. They're going to cover tack boards and do some landscaping and help unbox. And they helped us at Spencer, and it was really a wonderful event. So we've got them scheduled the last day in July. Gamble Montessori High School. So we are really working hard. Bill has just been diligent about being out there, working with our contractors. We have a really strong commitment from everybody on site. They know our schedule, and they're working hard to meet that schedule. We've added overtime hours. They're working five, 10-hour days a week and Saturday. They're working five, 10-hour days a week and Saturday. So I can tell you, if you go there, we're saturated with workers. We're at the point where if we added any more, it wouldn't be productive. So we, we're really moving forward with that project. We've given tours to the LSDMC, Gamble ILT, and have toured the building with the new principal as well. So if you remember, a large portion of the work that we're doing in that building is upgrading the infrastructure, all-new mechanical systems, all-new electric. This is a photo of the first-floor hallway mechanicals. So you can see, everything that's up in the ceiling is brand-new. The old building didn't have any air conditioning. It had antiquated boilers. So this will be state-of-the-art mechanicals in this building. On the right are some of the example of some of the classrooms, you can see the ceiling grids in and we're starting to put LED lighting into the classroom spaces. Technology is being dropped in. If you can see, adjacent to the whiteboard at the front of the room, you can see the new network switch cabinet. Every classroom will have its own network switch, which will allow additional broadband capabilities in those spaces. We're putting a whole new kitchen and lunchroom in. This used to be the old art room spaces. The kitchen's moving along great. The new lunchroom, we actually took out that entire wall so you can see the columns that will be putting drywall around the columns and then we're just going to keep the lunchroom open to the hallway. And then on the bottom is the gym. We've already painted it with the Gamble colors. The floor has been sanded down and we were just waiting on the updated logo to be able to get that painted. So we've got that scheduled in the next few weeks. So here's our schedule. We're looking at getting a time-limited certificate of occupancy. You may have heard us talk about a TCO. A TCO means that all of our life safety elements have been inspected and approved, which means we can move into the building. And then we'll have to have the building department come back and give us a final CO. And usually what that entails is balancing the mechanical systems, some mechanical commissioning and details like that. We're looking at windows being complete August 9th, final cleaning, furniture installation and the movers. We have that sequenced. So we constructed the building from the top down, so fourth floor down. So we'll be cleaning, installing furniture, moving in fourth floor, then third floor, then second floor, then first floor, as opposed to being able to do the entire building at once. And that way, we're looking at being able to get teachers in just the week before school starts to unpack and get ready for students.
Questions? Mr. Morosky and followed by Mr. Davis.
This is really impressive. Thank you, Ms. Brandon. I have one simple question, at least for now. What is happening with all of the religious iconography at Mercy High School?
So the archdiocese took, took much of it to Macaulay. Some of it, they took, and I think they gave some to a seminary, they donated it to another religious organization. So essentially, there is none left.
There's none left? Okay, good.
Mr. Davis.
Appreciate you guys' efforts. It's amazing that you guys are working this hard. I know it's not Bill, so thanks, Rob.
No, it is. He's going to need a nap, like in September.
Just joking, you know I love him. The capacity of Gamble Montessori Gym, do you know that offhand?
Oh, wow.
I know it's big.
Whoa. Let me get back with you on that. I can tell you, it's comparable in size to Aiken.
Okay. Okay.
Never mention Aiken on.
I'm sorry.
Well, when you say Gamble, I say chum chum.
Yeah, it is. It's a really nice-sized gym.
Thank you, thank you guys. I mean, this is amazing. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, any other questions? You mentioned the, go ahead, Ms. Bates.
And I just have a quick question. At a future meeting, can you give us an update on how the Gamble Elementary is coming along in its renovations?
Absolutely. I'll share some photos, but I can tell you, we're doing almost all of that work in-house and they're, they're cranking along quickly. Yeah, we actually already have painters out there painting and, yeah.
Ms. Bolton?
At a future meeting too, I think it'd be great for the board and the community to actually have kind of a view of the entire Mercy site. I know we can't worry about that right now, but the other buildings that are located there, the parking piece, the gardens and what have you, because I think they might not be, yeah, we might not be fully aware of this great piece of property. I just wanted to piggyback on that.
Go ahead, real quick.
Can we do like a video like Realtors do and put it up on the website?
We could do a drone video, sure.
That would be an easy thing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, thank you. Those project plans and the whole bit, I mean, you've got it planned to the minute. So I feel guilty actually even making a comment now when you should be, I'm sure you ought to be out there rallying the troops. But this is really more, you know, I think with all of these great things, I had the opportunity, as we're going around to some of the community councils and talking about kind of what's happening in the district. And I was at Columbia Tusculum and they were especially interested in the fact that we were doing these new buildings, which was kind of in our presentation. So, you know, I think there's just such an opportunity for, and I know Lauren has some of these planned, some Westwood neighbors were saying, hey, when can we, so she's got some things and we're getting that out. But press events and as much as we can get that out there, I mean, it really speaks to the vibrancy of the district. So thank you for being on the spearhead of making that happen.
And that sort of leads to my question around the response of the community. And I too have been approached by a number of folks on the west side wanting more information. Where is it, you know, where are things, how's it going, you know? Both positive and not so positive, but it's all good. And I think that it'd be nice to know. I don't know if we've had any formal feedback or questions or concerns, but my question is, are we still continuing to engage the community? Is there an LSDMC being formed at, at that site and all that?
I'm going to ask Lauren Worley to come forward. I know that there has been community engagement, ongoing engagement with the community as well as the LSDMC.
Thank you, Robin.
Our existing LSDMC from Gamble High School is still in place and has been part of the hiring process for our terrific new principal, Taylor Porter, who is already hitting the ground running as fast as someone can from Westerville to here. He's had, he's had the opportunity to meet with the LSDMC and tour the building with the LSDMC, as Robin mentioned. We have a letter and a robo-call that's gone out from him to his new families. It's going out this week and is on the school webpage as well. And just yesterday, we finished up filming with the Gamble Juniors, who are going to be launching a video this fall that shows their excitement about moving from their current school to their new one. And it's, the gym's full of boxes, I can tell you that. They've got a lot to move. On Gamble Montessori Elementary, Melissa Ridley actually has a staff and parent meet and greet scheduled for tomorrow. And then she's got a neighborhood cleanup in July, as well as a meet and greet scheduled August 15th for Gamble High School. We have our student back-to-school open house scheduled for August 12th and our community, don't quote me on the dates, I'll have to look it up, the 12th, and then a community open house to give the community the first look on August 13th. And I think that's about as far as Robin was willing to make sure that we can have a safe experience for everybody to check out the grounds. And that information's going out. I believe you were at Westwood last night, sorry?
That's another story.
It rained, it's fine. But we are continuing to share that information with them. Melissa is actually, Melissa Ridley's actually presented to the Westwood Civic Association at their request and as soon as we can get Taylor there, we'll do that as well. We've also created a kind of a community outreach plan with him that we're working through as he transitions from his current job to his new job.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
The first two weeks are going to be critical of the close-by neighbors. And I would hope that, the Gamble staff is a very involved staff and what have you. You're going to need a high profile of grownups out there because the people are going to be upset about the buses.
Yes.
They're going to be upset about the kids initially and we do know that there is some sale of property taking place there that we don't want to see happen. But I just make sure that we have a really engaged and high-profile presence in those first couple of weeks while the kids get sorted in and the neighborhood gets acclimated to this.
Thank you. I think that's a good point. That's certainly one of the comments that I've heard was from somebody who lives right in, you know, across the street. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. We look forward to closer to the opening of school. Our final presentation.
So it would be remiss of me not to mention and underscore the tremendous amount of work by the CPS team to make this happen. In January, the decision was made to open yet a third school and Robin and her team, they're actually making that happen. And so, again, I can't underscore enough how much hard work has been put into this. And so, I mean, just really great kudos and shout-out to Robin and her team. Thank you so very much. In addition, it's, it would be remiss of me not to mention the team that has been in place since we announced these buildings that are opening on a weekly basis, coming before the Performance Leadership Team, providing us an update on enrollment, ordering, everything. And so there is a 30-member team made up of different departments within this district that have been meeting on a regular basis. And then one to two people come each week to Performance Leadership Team to give a report. So now we have a really good template in terms of how to open buildings. It takes a tremendous amount of work and coordination effort. And again, I just really want to highlight all the people, all the administrators who have made this happen. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
For our final presentation, I'm actually going to ask Vice President Messer to do the introduction. So Ryan Messer brought to my attention the opportunity to have scholarships for our students offered by the Art Academy. And so just always really grateful for the connections that Board Messer, Board Member Messer has been able to facilitate for us. So I'll offer the opportunity for him to open this presentation.
Yeah, well, welcome. Many of you may know Deb Dixon, who's an old friend. And it was her son who approached me and said, I'm coming back to Cincinnati and I'm going to be working with the Art Academy. And, you know, is there a possibility of being able to engage with Cincinnati Public Schools? And of course, arts, I think, has been a passion for this board and for the district and the great presentation that we had, was it last month, I believe, of all the great things happening across the district. But, you know, the more he and I chatted, I was fascinated by the fact that, like Cincinnati State, they have kind of an evolving program so that, you know, they're working to, and you all will be able to do this much better than me, but they're working to ensure that the specialties and the majors that they offer their students are germane to today's workforce and marketplace needs. And it really expanded what my, my understanding of what actually took place in that building, a building that we held many of my community council meetings when I was president down in Over the Rhine. So it's great to have you guys here to give us a little bit more and I think just a really interesting opportunity for some of our students to have the ability to go there fee-free going forward.
Thank you, thank you, Ryan. Yeah, speaking to Deb Dixon's wonderful son, Tyler Hildebrandt, Amanda Parker Woolery and myself, Jack, are people who worked really closely with Tyler. And today, we're kind of just going to talk to you a little bit briefly about the college and what we're doing down in Over the Rhine and what we've been doing for 150 years. And beyond that, we're also going to talk to you about the partnership that we've done with CPS and to incoming students that we're really excited about who are CPS students or alumni, I should say. So thank you. This year, if you don't know, it's in the beautiful viewbooks that you have in front of you now, we're celebrating our 150th anniversary as a College of Art and Design. We celebrate the seers, the radicals, the innovators that have helped establish some of the most influential artists of their time. From names you might recognize such as Maria Longworth, Charlie Harper, Tom Shaw and Peter Coyne. In 2005, we made our move to Historic Over the Rhine and participated in the revitalization of the most vibrant and creative, one of the most vibrant and creative neighborhoods in the country. The legacy of the Art Academy can be seen all over Cincinnati. It has provided life-changing experiences to many artists and designers who have in turn made a difference in our city and beyond. This year, we share our bold past while planning our innovative future. We look forward to engaging the community in ways we never have before, such as our partnership with CPS. Today, we're going to show you some cool videos. As I mentioned, the first video we're going to show you is going to reference our 150 years and then also kind of just put on a map what we're doing right now. And then Amanda will come up after the videos and introduce some more stuff to you. So we've got a video for you here. All right.
So thanks for letting us, oh, that's loud. Thanks for letting us share that. So if you participate in Blink, most of the murals you saw in that video were actually our alumni. Tyler did one of those murals, so you could see how the Art Academy is woven within the city. Oh, that went a little fast. But what I want to talk to you about is our two CPS scholarship winners. First is Helena Roche Gonzalez. They just graduated from the School for Creative and Performing Arts. I remember seeing Elena's work when I judged it during the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. It blew my mind. I want to give you a little background. I went to art school for undergrad, I went to DAT for grad school, and I've taught at about five art colleges. Helena's work was some of the best I ever saw. They actually won so many awards that it filled half of a hallway at the Art Academy. So learning about assumptions and how you should never assume, this is going to make me teary-eyed. I assume that they were going off to great, amazing things. They'd go to RISD and all of that wonderful stuff, just because of the outstanding work they did. It was the first piece in that video. So when Helena applied for the CPS scholarship, they wrote in their letter that there was no way, hold on, they would actually get to go to school without the scholarship. You'll find out why I'm crying. Anyhow, so thank you for partnering with us. And next is Jaden, and Jaden's piece was the last one. And Jaden reminds me a lot of myself, untapped talent. The raw talent is there and they just need it honed in and people to support them and bring that out. Another student that wouldn't get to go to college if it weren't for this scholarship. And why I'm kind of tearing up is for me- up is, for me, this is super personal. I grew up in an industrial Midwest town. Jobs were fleeing. Mom died when I was 17, and there was no way I would have went to college without the help of a village. What you guys are doing are your village to these students. So Ryan, you reaching out to Tyler, you literally changed two students' lives. So good job.[622.41][622.41][applause] So I really want to thank you for that. And I also want to thank some of your employees. SCPA for Helena, without putting their life out there. Without that school and the support it's given her, she wouldn't even be here even with the full ride. Norma, if you know Norma, who is a counselor at SCPA, has filled a void in the parental unit for Helena and has been to the Art Academy to make sure housing is together, schedule is together. That's above their call of duty. So what you're doing and how you're working with these schools is outstanding and amazing because you are changing the city, and we really appreciate that, and we really appreciate you partnering with us this year. So, any questions? I didn't cry. Okay, good.
Two board members have questions.
Okay.
Ms. Bowers.
I think I may have missed it, but did you say Jaden was your second winner?
Jaden, yes. They're from Dater. Sorry, they're from Dater. I had that written down.
Okay, Dater High.
Dater and then SCPA.
SCPA, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Okay, Mr. Messer.
Yeah, just thank you for your work. And I mean, you were really the ones that were willing to partner with us to create this opportunity. And frankly, awareness, I think, is the other benefit of something that, for many of our children in Over the Rhine who were at opportunity, that's within walking distance, and I think how we cobble together resources while they're in school and after school to help create brighter futures is so critical. So thank you for your, your partnership.
Definitely. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton.
Thank you very much for, for what you're doing as an institution. And I guess it's the Reds and the Art Academy that are 150 years old. So that's, that's pretty good company for them. So appreciate it. The other thing is just this past week, they did dedicate at SCPA the Kleindings College and Career Center, which is allowing the, an expansion of that kind of service by both the counselors and teachers, and also the space for students to access the kinds of things that they need to access. So this might have just been part of the spark as well. So we're so fortunate to be SCPA, the gateway to the OTR arts community. And you all, you moved there, but you've been around longer than anybody, except maybe the symphony, but that's about it, if that.
Yeah. I don't, I think we beat the symphony by a couple of years, but yeah.
That's great.
Thank you. And yes, kudos to all of you, and kudos to the people you have working in your schools. They're absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation.[794.73][794.73][applause] Okay, so we're going to present our resolutions at this time. I'm going to ask Ms. Bolton if you would please present the following resolution for the second reading. Okay, cool.
For the second reading and discussion, not yet a vote. I'd like, on behalf of the Finance Committee particularly, to present for review at the June 19, 2019 Board of Education meeting, resolution setting district priorities for the renegotiation of the 1999 Tax Abatement Agreement with the City of Cincinnati. I present for second reading.
Is, is there, this is not for approval, so we need to open up for discussion, questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Bates.
Yes, I want to present two additions to this, two statements that didn't quite make it in, I guess, with the, with the importance that I placed at the last meeting. So number three, before the parties, I would like to insert, a priority of the district is to grow our student enrollment, comma, keeping our current families in addition to increasing enrollment with new families attracted as a direct result of development. So that's, that's before, that precedes the remainder of number three. And then I want to add a number eight for consideration. The board shall reserve the right to be informed and to negotiate separately CRAs and TIFs that have significant impact on the district.
And I, I would also thank you for reading those because I think it's important that the public hear that as well. But if you please would make sure that Daniel has your written version of it, just to be clear, because I saw him writing and couldn't keep up with you.
Yeah, I'll make sure he does. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Davis?
I just got, I just have one question, and it's in number three as well. How are we defining market-ready?
Sorry, that's from Mr. Drehouse's presentation. I, I used his language. I, I believe what he intended by that is areas of the city that are not necessarily in need of incentivizing for, for development, but.
I, I just think we need to have a more concrete, I, I think I get a sense of what market-ready is, but I think we need to have a more concrete definition of what market-ready is.
Thank you.
So we just don't have a future, a future argument.
Okay. Mr. Messer.
On the one, two, three, four, five, whereas, this kind of goes to a, a presentation I was at, at a J&amp;J meeting last week that said, "Don't use the words but, however," or try to use and as often as possible. And I think here, you know, the board recognized and understands the significant impact of abatements, yada, 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 and the board maintains that its primary mandate. So.
Got it.
So we say that, and our mandate is that we have to, so I think it kind of makes that, you know, both of these are, that's important.
strengthens it.
But this is our, this is our priority. And I do agree with that market-ready, and I think there is some verbiage out there, but, but I think even, you could even put it as you described it, areas of the city where incentive, incentives aren't.
Necessary.
Necessary, based on current market conditions, or, or something like that. But I think there is some language out there that would, that would call that out. But I think Mr. Davis made a great point on that.
I, I just, again, want to ask that if you're making recommendations, just make sure you communicate again, just so, Mr. Hoying, I, I see him writing, and I'm sure he has it, but just to make sure he's capturing exactly what you wanted to say. That would be great. Okay. Ms., Ms. Bolton, I'm sorry, did you finish? Ms. Bolton?
I have several things I'd like to, to say. I, I do think, I don't see the great need for including a description of what the 99 agreement was about. I feel much more strongly about having a resolution that is moving forward. This, this is not a contract that we have reopened to make changes to. This is a brand-new agreement. So I mean, just philosophically, I think that's much more proactive. I, I appreciate the public education that that might provide for, but I, I, I think it would be stronger if we're saying, "This is what we want." But I just suggest that. And that being the case, that wonderful stanza area where we talk about the, the engagement and whatever, that's a great lead-in. I mean, that's a great starting place for a more proactive kind of resolution. I have also, and this, I hate to say this to everybody, because I still don't know if the board fully feels comfortable dismissing the idea that we have no agreement. I mean, the, the reality is, I'm, I'm, I'm semi-comfortable having, having an agreement, but I don't, I still don't think I'm knowledgeable enough yet to know why some people might still think having no agreement is better, or either as a starting point or as a goal. And I, I don't know where we can get that kind of additional information. And third, I mean, the other piece is to Mrs. Bates's issue about reserving particular authority. I, I like that, but I, I know we have not, as a board, figured out if we really, as a board, want to do that. So I mean, there's, there's big, big substantive issues that probably before somehow the 24th, if possible, we still have to discuss. So, and one of them is, we, I need to know better about why we wouldn't have one, since the city threw down that gauntlet, and, and I'm not sure they fully understand what they were saying. And I think that it should be a resolution positive. And I, and after other people talk, I'll, I'll throw in a few specifics that I'd still like to see, that I, I believe I mentioned last time.
Mr. Davis, I'm going back to you, followed by Ms. Bates.
I just want to comment on the tone. I thought the tone was a lot better this time, and I want to thank you for that. And then I want to piggyback on, remember Bolton's piece around no agreement? I think I asked at the last meeting that we get more information about what no agreement looks like, and how no agreement can play a role in the potential negotiation process.
Ms. Bates?
And kind of to comment on Ms. Bolton's response to my number eight, the board shall reserve the right to be informed and negotiate separately CRAs and TIFs. I guess that's a, an attempt at a hybrid, so that we don't have to, you know, we, we may not want to consider every single agreement that comes before the city, but if there's a, a big development that's up and coming, that holds a, a significant impact, then that's one that we would want to negotiate separately. And I saw that in a couple of the city's agreements. It, it, it also appeared that Cincinnati really was the only one who gave carte blanche to the city to make these decisions. So I would like the board to consider that, that we do have, reserve the right to have that opportunity for exceptional developments that would have a significant impact.
Mr. Messer, followed by Ms. Bowers.
Okay, so also wondering, you know, because that whereas, whereas at the beginning, there is a whole lot about the 99 agreement. I, I agree with that. So maybe even that can be condensed a bit. But also saying, you know, we did this benchmarking, and I think the great thing we have from that is that cities are being imaginative or thoughtful in how these agreements are being constructed. So it might say, whereas cities across Ohio and across the country have utilized these agreements to help support other needs in their communities, or something like that, so that, you know, putting something in, be it resolved, that, you know, we hope areas such as affordable housing, you know, they, they had those workforce development-type activities that benefited the schools. There were some other scholarship investments. So how you, so whereas, we believe this agreement could help us drive a more competitive workforce, increase affordable housing for our families, and generate new and innovative resources for our, our students, or something. So I think saying in the whereas that these things have happened across the state and beyond, and that perhaps this is an opportunity for us to think differently in this agreement. I think on number three, going back to that one, I forgot I'd circled the one, I think we should stay away from anything that says the city should not offer, and just say, you know, citywide abatements are likely not necessary for development to occur in all neighborhoods. Therefore, where those are not necessary based on current market conditions, the, the schools should be held harmless. So I think it, it takes it out of saying, "You shouldn't do this." It's, this is just what makes sense. And it's frankly paraphrasing what hundreds of people have probably told me over the past several years. I think number six, the city should commit, I think if we say, a partnership between Cincinnati Public Schools and the City of Cincinnati to provide blah, 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 blah. So it's really, instead of saying, "Since the city should do this," but partnership where the, the parties work together there, gets it out of us saying, but, but that partnership is crucial. And I think those are the rest of my comments.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bowers.
Hi, Mr. Hoying. Is it, and I may be mixing things up, but when we talked about having, not having an agreement, would that affect our resource officers if we didn't have an agreement?
So I'll say on the resource officers, they fall within the same paragraph of the 99 agreement that the nurses and the.
Crossing guards.
Crossing guards fall. The city has, has, we, we now pay for the nurses and the crossing guards. The city has continued to assign resource officers to our school. It's, it's, you know, ultimately, so, so there's nothing requiring them to do that. I think we would say, and I hope the city would say also, that it's in all of our best interests. It's not, it's not that they're providing them, it's that those are resource officers that receive additional training in working with students, and, and that it benefits us, certainly, that it benefits the city as well, and, and their allocation of police resources, that it, it makes sense for them to assign the officers in that way. Certainly, we benefit from it, but I, I think it, it's also the most sensible way that the city can assign sort of police officers to schools, as opposed to, let's say, just having the neighborhood, you know, police officer also handle the issues at the school. They've given some special training to officers, and I think that's mutually beneficial. Is that helpful?
Well, the question, well, I want to know if we didn't have, if we, I know Board Member Bolton said that she wasn't sure how we all felt.
Right.
About not having an agreement. If that happened, would we lose that relationship?
And what I'm saying is, for the last 20 years, there's been nothing contractually requiring.
Okay.
The city to have school resource officers.
Okay.
And they've still provided them. So I, I would hope that with or without an agreement, it still makes sense.
That we're still being placed.
Okay. Ms. Bates, followed by Ms. Bolton.
And that is my concern that, you know, and that's what happened with the crossing guards and the school nurses. We hoped that.
Correct.
It would continue, and it didn't. And I would recommend, at least for a starting point, adding, because they are, the city is providing the services.
Yes.
We're paying for a whole lot of it, you know, providing and funding municipal services.
Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, the funding. Mm-hmm, yeah, add funding.
Okay.
Yeah, the, just to get a little bit more specific, and a question I have, in this, the way it read, it sounded like we weren't asking for any cash annually, that we just wanted a higher percentage?
That's, that's.
Is that?
That's the draft, yes.
Is that what the administration is recommending? No actual cash annually?
We've discussed those options. Quite frankly, the district, as long as we get the revenue that's due us, we don't care as much where it comes from, whether it's coming from the city or the developers. I mean, we just don't want to lose the $5 million completely. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and my thought there is that, to me, that represented a change in the administration's position, because I thought we, we, at least initially, were saying cash. I, I thought we wanted our $5 million and we needed more. I just thought I heard that. But if that's.
We wanted the $5 million that was attached to, the money out of the $5 million that was attached to the agreements that are in pending status. In other words, the city's already approved under the old agreement, and so the payments to make those whole should continue for whatever value that is, but not to restart a new $5 million payment.
Well, on, on two issues of that, then if we're not going to be asking for cash, so to speak, then it would seem to me that it would make sense that we ask that they provide municipally-required and author, authorized services to us, whether it's the nurses or the resource officers. officers, or the crossing guards. If we're not asking for, I want the city to pay something for putting us through this, if nothing else. I mean, the reality is that they, I'd like to see that, and also, I don't know, do we lose the stanza about whatever has been previously decided? You know, the other, the other CRAs that have been granted, did I miss that in this one?
No, that's.
We want those to remain as they are. We're not, this, this new agreement does not pertain to the things we've already agreed to. Right?
Right. So, my, just to clarify, and I won't speak for anybody else, just my thought on the cash payments is that, that the city has essentially been subsidizing the developers. The pilot payments that we get from the developers, the 25%, is not sufficient to make up our fixed-rate levies. Fixed-rate levies are about 32, 33%. The developers are only paying 25%. That $5 million per the agreement is supposed to make up that amount. The problem with that, and so, you know, CFT has suggested, for example, that it increased to 10 or 15 million dollars a year. The problem with that, in my view only, is that the taxpayers are still paying for that. And so, so folks who are not abated are really getting double-hit. They're getting hit because they have to pay a higher percentage of fixed sum levies, because the CRAs aren't included in that, and then they have to make up that $5 million payment to the school district to make us whole. And that's why I am reluctant to propose to you a higher cash payment, or even any cash payment from the city, provided with the significant provision that we are being made whole on our fixed-rate percentage. That's my position.
And based upon that, as this is a public document, and as everybody's recognizing, we're conducting this business totally under the lights and streaming. I mean, this is unheard of, of what we're doing, and we challenge the city to do the same. The, I do, anyway, I challenge them to do the same, but with that justification, then it makes sense that you're not trying to double-pay or regarding, or double-penalize the taxpayers.
That's right.
That would then be the justification, in lieu of any cash coming to us, then the city needs to commit to providing these particular services, because they need to be providing those services, and the community will recognize that those services are and should be city services provided us, and not contracted. So, I mean, I think that, I think that's a stronger statement, and in the one you have, you are adding residential, apparently. You did so weekly, I will say.
I can be, I think it's a difficult point of negotiation with the city where the Board doesn't have approval rights statutorily. Does that?
I mean, that, but that does speak to Mrs. Bates's point, that maybe we wanted not, I don't know that we can go to the community and say, we don't want anything to do with this, and we're not going to exercise any responsibility. But it also means that the residential piece is having more of an impact on housing and enrollment, perhaps, than whether or not there's an industrial thing. I mean.
Absolutely right.
Somewhere, I would like you also say that when they do these developments, the city is benefiting with additional revenue, and we are getting less if we don't, if we can't make it good, because they're benefiting with the income tax on commercial, and we're not getting anything, except unless we can make them whole.
So, I, this is an excellent discussion, and especially for me, because I wasn't, I missed the last meeting when it was the first reading, I guess it was. But I think, Ms. Bolton, you raised the concern about whether or not we even need an agreement as something that we need to resolve, because it doesn't make any difference what changes we give. We have to make a decision, is, do we want an agreement or not? And if not, then the resolution has to read to, how are we going to deal with this concern? So, and I'm saying that to ask the Board, what is their will about what the next step is for this? Do we, are we asking Mr. Hoen to proceed with making the changes and looking at this again, or do we need further conversation about, do we need an agreement? What does that mean? And what do we need to look at? Or do we not need an agreement? Is that helpful, just putting it in that context? So, that's a question I'm asking of the Board. What is the will of the Board?
My first answer would be, I think we need both to be able to proceed, and I think the predisposition is to have an agreement that is something that we're proud of and can present to the public, is what our request and proposal has been. But I do think that we need to be able to, also in negotiations, our folks need to be able to also say, when the city, if they start the negotiations the way they started with that horrible letter, we don't need an agreement, we can just move on. I think we need to be very, very educated about what that would mean for them, because I'm not altogether sure they fully appreciate what that may mean, and I think we need to be comfortable moving ahead with an agreement.
Okay. Ms. Bates?
Well, and we have to do this by Monday, right?
Yes.
Okay. We need to know that timeline, because we're off in July. So, we need to attend to this by Monday, so Mr. Hoen has a tall order. But I do believe we need to discuss publicly what no agreement means, since we received that letter from Mr. Dehaney. So, the public knows what that means, and I do agree that we need the revision of this, and then the Board can decide on Monday which direction to.
And that's, that's exactly what I was asking. Thank you. Yes. Because the timeline is Monday, there's a lot that we're asking in terms of where we, the position that we take. So, yeah, Monday.
Since there's an interest in continuing the public part of it, I don't know if there's any issues or time. I know the follow-up tax abatement is on the Finance Committee meetings tomorrow as well. So, if there's another opportunity for that, then at least that's publicly done before Monday, and maybe there'd be a better sense of whatever, whether it's no agreement, or whether it's continuing to look at this revision, so that, because we have to, we have to get to our point and our position Monday night.
Okay. Ms. Bates?
One more. Can we have the revision for tomorrow's Finance Committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not sure if you can prepare at least an outline of what it would look like if we didn't have an agreement, or if you can, you know, or if you, you can consult with Mr. Dreehouse. I know that this is very short notice, but we're on a pretty tight timeline, and if we can at least get this conversation and education rolling, so Finance can prepare for the Board meeting on Monday.
And we hadn't scheduled to do minutes of Finance and Policy and Student Achievement, I don't think, by Monday, but maybe we should by Monday have just the Finance minutes.
Needs to be a priority.
Yes, thumbs up, Mrs. Wagner.
But, yeah. This is a big ask, and, but I think, given what we're talking about, we may not meet in July, what have, I think it's, we need to do it. Treasure Wagner?
Yeah, so, as the conversation has been happening, I've been processing the $5 million payment. The payment from the city comes to us in two payments, 25, 2.5 million each twice a year. That money gets deposited directly into our debt fund to pay against the cops' debt. We'll be okay, as long as the increased value of the pilot payments gets transferred to replace that $5 million in the debt payment schedule. Otherwise, it becomes a bigger burden on the operational budget. My concern, and Dan and I need to think through this a little bit, is in the law, if the city abates less than 75%, they don't need our approval, and we don't bill for pilot payments. So that if they start shifting their strategy and start doing the lesser values, then we lose out on revenue, which would hurt that. So, I think Dan and I need to have another conversation about the pros and cons of that strategy.
So, okay, thank you. So, my question is, are we, is the Board wanting to have a final vote on this on Monday? Or is this going to be a third reading?
If at all possible.
Okay. All right, then, when we get to assignments, there probably are going to be a number of assignments, or things that need to happen before then. Okay. Anything else regarding this particular resolution? And it will be on Monday's agenda? It will be on Monday's agenda, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. Mr. Davis, please present the next resolution.
A resolution authorizing 2019-2020 membership to the Ohio High School Athletic Association, OHSAA, whereas the Cincinnati Public Schools District IRN 43752 of 2651 Bernard Avenue, 45219, Hamilton County, has satisfied all requirements for membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association, a voluntary, unincorporated association, not-for-profit, and whereas the Board of Education and its administration desire for the schools with one or more grade, seven to 12 grade level, under their jurisdiction, to be voluntary members of the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the following schools, Aiken, Clark Montessori, Hughes, James Engamble Montessori, Riverview East Academy, School of Creative and Performing Arts, Schroeder, Taft, Walnut Hills, Western Hills, Withrow, Woodward, and Euler High School, do hereby voluntarily renew membership in the OHSAA, and that in doing so, the Constitution of Bylaws, Regulations, and Business Rules of the OHSAA, and hereby adopted by this Board as and for its own minimum student athletic eligibility requirements. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the Board reserves the right to raise student athletic eligibility standards as it deems appropriate for the schools and students under its jurisdiction, and be it further resolved that the schools under the Board's jurisdiction agree to conduct their athletic programs in accordance with the Constitution, Bylaws, Regulations, Business Rules, Interpretations, and Decisions of the OHSAA, and cooperate fully and timely with the Executive Directors of the OHSAA in all matters related to the interscholastic athletic programs of the schools. Furthermore, the schools under the Board's jurisdiction shall be the primary enforcers of the OHSAA. I present this resolution for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Does anyone have any kudos? The kudo guy left. Okay. All righty. Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, we have several retirements of our civil service personnel. Michael Scott Flesher, Albert Lee Jr., Michelle McCollum, Marilyn A. Thomas, and we thank them for our service to our children, and congratulate them on moving on to another part of the life, and wish them well.
Thank you. Okay. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. And our first and only speaker is Ms. Julie Sellers.
I just wanted to come to you to speak and hope that you will remove Recommendation 3 from the Superintendent's Recommendations today, where it is the Superintendent recommends the Board approval of the 1920 Student Support and Code of Conduct for K-12. I do know that, and maybe you could hold it till Monday, so that we can see what that final language is, and possibly review it tomorrow at the Student Achievement. But I do know that everybody in the district's been really busy, and it seems to me that around this, there's been a lack of communication within Central Office of who this is impacting. I know that it was discussed at the April, it was brought initially to the April Student Achievement Committee, and at that time, there were no changes. I was supposed, and I had not seen it, and I was told that I could have till the following Tuesday to make some recommended changes. I met with at least three different, two different people from senior management, and two different departments within CPS Central Office to review that language and make sure. I also, and so then, that was at the, it was, I was, it was not changed in May. I have not seen the final language, but it's really upsetting to me that we're doing all of this work, and I think it's great that we're doing the work around the positive school culture. We have schools developing their PBIS plans, we are developing the ALCs, we have the whole expansion around the bullying program, but the language that is currently, has not been changed, it, I don't know if it's been changed or not changed. I don't think it's been changed. I have not seen that final copy, but there are changes that are not in alignment with the PBIS language. There are, there's current wording, there's wording that needs to be changed for, under the corrective strategies. For example, one of the corrective strategies is restorative practices. That is a program that CPS has not adopted, and it is, it should be restorative approaches as indicated in the school's PBIS plan. There is nothing in Category 1 that says parent contact if possible. There is, it has that there can be an office referral. Well, that is not a Category 1 strategy. For restitution, which is in Category 1, that is not something that a teacher, Category 1 is what is handled at the classroom level by the teacher. A teacher cannot implement or institute any type of restitution. Smoking and tobacco was, is in Category 1, that should, that is illegal behavior, and smoking doesn't occur in classrooms, and so, if it happens in the hallway at some high schools, they're not even allowed to address it, because it's not within their classroom in that the teacher is only allowed to address things that are happening in the classroom. So, there are some changes that have to be made, and I don't know if they've been made or they haven't been made. I've talked to PBIS teams about this, and all of the recommended changes, the senior manage, two senior management people I've talked to were in agreement with it. I've talked to PBIS teams, they were in agreement with these changes. I've talked to teacher leaders for, several different groups of teacher leaders, they were all in agreement. But we cannot invest all this money into having PBIS plans, and then what is sent home to parents is not in alignment. And so, until I see that, I hope that you will hold up, and that you do not support the Recommendation 3 until Monday, so that we can actually see if the changes were made. I know everybody up here is really busy with the ending of the school year, there's a lot of new initiatives coming along, there's the construction that's happening, but we can't just rush things through like we've done in the past, and this is something that I think that is, needs total alignment with where we are moving, so that the parents, and the students, and the teachers in the buildings are using the right terminology. So, I hope that when you take your vote, that you remove this, and it's addressed tomorrow at Student Achievement, and can be revoted on on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to Board Matters, and Mr. Davis, if you could, please present the Board Matters item.
We were having a conversation, as a matter of fact, we are reviewing use of facilities and policy, and our use of facilities policy does not cover long-term use, and we're going to continue that discussion tomorrow on policy. But we wanted to bring to the full Board. But we wanted to bring to the full Board for conversation, what, actually for direction, what do you guys want to see in regards to our long-term usage? There's a lot of conversation about whether or not a person or an organization that has a usage agreement is providing free service, whether or not that organization is profit, profiting from service, and how we might create a policy around ensuring that the district is operating fairly across the Board. And I'd ask, I'd ask Member Bates to, to join in on this.
Ms. Bates?
Yeah, and the conversation we were having in policy was around equity, because, you know, we, as we know, we have agreements or had agreements out there where we would lease our, our facilities for a dollar a year, but were we doing it for everybody? And, you know, again, was it for the greater good of our students and the community? We wanted to take a look at not just the rates, but the services and if they serve, you know? For instance, of the preschools, in some instances that we are allowing in our buildings, are they serving children who are subsidized or not? So, those are the questions that we had, and the basis of this was equity, making sure that we're not showing preferential treatment to some agencies and organizations and businesses over others.
Ms. Bolton?
I think it's a good discussion to have in, in the context of what we made a decision regarding Riverview and a early childhood provider. I think we have to be very, very careful that we don't ignite a community-wide freak out by our people like school-based health centers, or Mind Peace, or some of these other folks that are using our facilities for the service of our children. So, I want us to, as you go through that discussion, the whole concept of Community Learning Center is based upon that kind of access, long-term, in our buildings, and frankly, the pressure has been to try to extend it so that it's not just school days or school year, so that they would have more of an opportunity to serve. So, within that context, and I think there already is some policy regarding our own staff members using our facilities for profit that they're not supposed to be doing. I mean, those sorts, I think there's a number, but as we do it, I think the superintendent will probably have to be able to reassure the, the community partners that we have that depend upon that access, that this does not pertain to them. We're not shutting down, and with two, with Mercy leaving two of our buildings already, there's that kind of discussion. So, I think it's, it has to be a very diplomatic and contextual discussion that you're having in policy, and probably some reassurance, because this place just changes radically if, if we were to change that in some major way.
Other questions?
So, Mr. Davis, I think, what, what, I guess what, my question to you is, you're asked, what, what do you want from the Board today that might help you move forward? Are there things, specific kinds of assignments or recommendations that you're making to us? And then, that final question is, do you want to follow up to this? And I have to, and I'm asking that because, number one, I, we did not, not knowing specifically, I know you and I talked initially when I was asking for clarification, and one of the things that didn't happen is that we didn't send a copy of the policy to Board members, and we probably should have done that. And so, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that. So, do you want to revisit this, or is there something we can give you today in terms of direction?
Well, we're going to revisit it tomorrow, so this is really like a pre-discussion.
Yes, okay.
So, we'll revisit it in policy, and if, if there are, if there is a policy drafted, then in that discussion at the Board level, we can further.
That'd be great, okay.
Define it.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I think one thing that could be helpful is to brainstorm, what are, what are all the possible uses that people could come to us? You know, there, there are those things that I think are obvious, that are in current state, but, you know, somebody approached me recently and said, hey, well, there's not a whole lot of gymnastics in, within the city of Cincinnati. Any chance we could do like a gymnastic studio in your gyms when they're not being used? I didn't know the answer to that. But, you know, I think there are some ways where, of course, if they were setting up a studio out in Westchester, which is where their other location is, they've got big facility costs, and that comes out of their profits. Could we make money for the district by utilizing space when it's not in use by us? But to your point of the many services that, you know, that are squarely focused on helping our children succeed, and we heard even examples of that today, you know, I think we have to be very deliberate in making sure that they, to Ms. Bolton's point, don't feel threatened at all, but this is just equity. And I think, you know, I don't know anything frankly about the preschool provider that was part of that conversation, that all predates me, I have no personal ties to that. But I also know that people said, well, in the past, well, do you let all community preschools allow to have space if, if they'd like to use your buildings? That's how I first learned that we even had other providers in preschools, people asking me, hey, is this open to all? So, I think we just have to, whatever it is, be very deliberate about the various usages, thinking about the specific audience, and I think the dollars, you know, play a role and have to be considered. But if we kind of create an understanding of, of what the request may be, then, then we can have consistent language for each.
Yeah, and, and I do appreciate the clarity Mr. Davis brought to this because, and then, Board Member Bates spoke to this, and the whole issue of equity, you know, when we, when we are actually trying to have a district and create a district around culture of excellence and equity, we have to sometimes pick it apart, because once you pick apart the layers of it, you then realize that things are happening, and thus, here we are having questions about whether or not these long-term, the, the use of these facilities is an equitable process. So, I appreciate the clarity around that, because it is an equity issue.
And that using the buildings is generally good.
Yes.
And the, the more we can make them community spaces where communities are gathering and people feel safe, and ideas are exchanged, and neighborhoods are built, I think, making sure that, I think we all agree with that, it's just then, how do you create fairness on those people who utilize those spaces?
So, okay, so in closing that, that item, Mr. Davis, we look forward to next step from the Policy Committee as to how you want to proceed with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All righty, Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. So, you may be interested to know that one of our Spencer students, Magnus Rosen, has become a trained docent at the Harriet Beecher Stowe House, and so that's quite exciting, and so we look forward to other opportunities in which our young people can get engaged civically within our community, so just thought you might want to know that, which is kind of exciting. We also would like to highlight our latest YouTube video that talks about what Montessori is, so we'll play that for you in just a couple moments. We're not playing the video? Okay, I'm sorry, there is a video. Go to YouTube, check the video out on YouTube.
One-page video.
And when you get there, make sure you like it. So, although school is out for many students, we also would like to highlight one of our Vision 2020 schools, Bond Hill, and they are hosting a series of math and science days over the course of the summer, and you can see the dates that are listed. So, these are fun activities for parents and kids to get engaged with science and mathematics. The Cincinnati Museum Center will present interesting facts and some bugs and tidbits, as well as the petting zoo, and so we invite our families and young people to get engaged. And that concludes the short presentation.
Thank you. Do I need a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Bolton?
Those of us on the Student Achievement Committee had some concerns too. We totally understand that the, the printing issue for the Code of Conduct and Character Building document has to get done, but we do feel strongly that there, we're not sure yet, first of all, if some of the revisions or all of the revisions have been placed in, especially the, we do know that the one moving smoking to a second level has not been. Other ones that Mrs. Sellers has mentioned, and other ones that we brought to the attention of the administration, have been made. There still remains some discussion about restorative practices and, and approaches, but we would like to ask that Student Achievement have a few minutes tomorrow, and that all Board members receive the electronic version of the code, because I don't know that that happened in, in a timely manner for everybody to review. So, it shouldn't take long at Student Achievement, if we can have it withdrawn today and have it voted on again on Monday. The, the other one that was just a pet peeve of mine is that there's not a teenager in the book. And I'm, I'm a, I'm a big fan of teenagers. Yes, so, I think we'd like Superintendent to withdraw Number Three and be ready to, we can fix that if we can, on, in Student Achievement tomorrow and vote, and sorry to have the delay, but it is critical.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So, the motion, it's been motioned and seconded to approve the Superintendent's report with the revision to withdraw until Monday, the Code of Conduct.
Superintendent, you have to approve that in turn before.
Superintendent?
Yes, I will withdraw that section until Monday.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the Treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Davis?
I have a question. On ABC's contract, it says it's the third year of three. I was under the impression that we were extending that, I don't know if it was, I know it was a conversation in Student Achievement around extending their contract. Can you give me a better understanding?
Yes, so, it was brought up at Finance Committee two meetings ago, or meeting ago, I can't remember how far along ago it was, about extending their contract to the possibility of doing it five-year. It's been put back onto the agenda this Thursday, but in order for me to get his first payment out, I needed the contract this annual to get approved.
I was, thank you, all right, I got it, I totally get it, thank you.
Other discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye, thank you. Does anyone have any inquiries or updates, other than me? Mr. Davis?
I have an, I have an inquiry that we're going to address tomorrow in, in, in policy, Policy 5722. Mr. Hoynes is not listening to me anyway, so I'll just email him later.
He is not, he's busy.
No.
He's working on facilities, can't you tell?
Much more important, no. Policy 5722, I've already asked Ms. Bronkner to put it on our agenda for tomorrow, but Member Morowski had a concern and was approached by some students, I forget what school he was at, I'm sorry, it was at Wanted Hills, because they were chatterbox students, and this is a policy around publications, and he wants to review the very last line, which gives authority, all authority of publications to principals, and we want to revisit that to see how we can ensure that students have some freedom in, around what, what's published and what's not published. I just thought it was something that we should, we should look at as, as fast as possible.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bates?
And this could either be an inquiry or an assignment, but as long as we're talking about tomorrow's Policy Committee meeting, I, it was brought to my attention when Dan Betts from CRC wanted to take a look at our policy on background checks, that it hadn't been reviewed since 2010. Now, I know that you review the procedures annually, but our policy hadn't been kept up to date. It looks like the boilerplate policy from Neola or OSBA, quite frankly, and I also talked to Mr. Hoynes and Mr. Davis about adding that to the agenda as well, just so everybody's aware.
And that's been added to the agenda as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Messer?
Yes, and I think this maybe is for the after-school type reporting, but I'm sure we'll get kind of an update of, here's where we are with students and populations by building, et cetera. And I'm wondering if we could also do kind of a workforce update as one of our largest spends, you know, just kind of going through number of principals, teachers, but I'm more interested in, in, you know, our, and we're going to do some fun engagement work ahead, but are we seeing attrition? Are we seeing attrition generally down, but maybe high in some buildings? I'd just love to know kind of where our workforce is, kind of a state of the workforce, maybe, after we begin the school year and get everybody settled, just from a basic understanding.
Is this going to be an assignment? Or are you asking somebody to provide a report of some sort?
Well, it's almost like when we do kind of our state of the district with the students and we're, maybe we also embed the kind of employee side.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, just a couple of really simple things here. We, we had talked about not having a meeting in July. I'm in favor of that.
So moved.
I think, and just to, just to give a justification for that, we've been really, really busy. We will always be busy, and I think this is one of the things that I fully support, is that to give administration a break, and, and there, there's lots of vacations and things, including our own staff, both of them, and so, it would really be great if we didn't have a meeting unless there was an emergency need for a decision around contracts or something, and if that happens, then of course, they would notify us, and we can come together as long as we have a quorum. So, I'm asking, so, if folks are okay with that, let's decide not to have a meeting. Are we good with that? We don't, we don't need a motion on that, do we? Do we need a motion? Okay.
Yes, does that include committee meetings?
That's, that's for you. I, I'm saying yes.
Yeah.
Not have any meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Melanie, what, we're, we're, two, two findings, yes.
Let's not, no meetings.
No meetings.
Just don't forget where, just don't forget where you live in August, right here, come back, okay?
You're welcome, everyone.
All right, so we've done that. All right, and then, secondly, we are pressed for time to complete our next year's calendar, and Ms. Bolton loves to do that kind of thing, so I was going to actually assign it to her, if everybody is, okay.
Co-share that with her, please.
Yes, and, yeah, well, you are over the Board Planning and Development, and I was going to say that, if you could work with her on that, that would be great, okay. That's all I have in inquiries and updates, and I'll make that an assignment, moving into assignments. That'll be the first assignment, is to assign the Board calendar.
That'll be the first assignment is to assign the board calendar to Mr. Messer and Ms. Bolton. Okay, other assignments? No assignments? Okay. I'm waiting. Ms. Bolton isn't here, okay. Having no other agenda before us, I declare the meeting adjourned.
We're going to have a long meeting on Monday, aren't we?
Yeah, it's going to be a long week.
Marathon.